For.
For the United States of America. And to the United States, one nation under one law. In the middle of all with literacy and justice for all.
Jenny, I'm gonna go around. It's all on film. Well, that's.
Yeah, I mean, that was. So, yeah, we're just extension office according to the procedures requesting. The. Close office, I think, for today. For a couple hours and then October first, there's some building for the office.
Is that around lunchtime or is that towards the end a little bit?
For today?
For.
Well, it'd be around lunchtime, I know, for the. I think it'd be. Yeah, I think so.
Give me the time.
You don't think it'd be there, so. But, yeah, it's kind of very kind of a slow time of year, so.
I'll make the motion note through the request to close the extension office for. A few hours. As needed for team building events on September sixteenth and October first.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
On third.
There you go.
Thank you. Jenny.
Morning.
Morning.
I have fresh copies of these, in case you haven't seen the signed copy. Justin, I think you've seen electronic. I only started with this first compliance monitoring job that I talked with Justin a little bit about. And then also did some follow up with Mark. This seemed like it was further along and maybe your permitting process and. You already had some things that looked like worked out.
I forget a whole bunch this morning.
Yes. This one was a smaller one of them. And originally, I wasn't sure size wise and, you know, the level of work. So after talking with Mark, some you'll see the scope of work for this compliance monitoring. Is appendix A. Everything up to that point is our standard contract. And then I put a tentative schedule, but that obviously can change based on whenever. This kicks off and how long it lasts. Because I wasn't sure those details. But the scope of work includes how we would serve in this compliance monitoring role. That's basically says that you're authorizing us to represent you, the county, in terms of doing. Monitoring for your agreements. So we would first initially do a review of all of your agreements that you have with the company. So we'd look at your road usage agreement, we'd obviously look at all of your ordinances. And make sure that we know what they're monitoring for. We would obviously arrange for an attend progress meetings and that includes a kickoff meeting with the company. With your staff and all of you so that we understand the role and everyone at the table does as well. We would obviously be acting as a designated of you all and you're the owner in this contract. We'd act as a designated to ensure that that developer is complying. In this particular case, it did the Hoosier Solar project because that's the one I knew the most about. Obviously, we would write these separately for other entities if you all wanted to move forward with a compliance monitoring on those as well. We document on behalf of you any activity that occurs between us and that developer. So, for example, if we're having a kickoff meeting. Or we are on site to look at what's been mobilized or if they've got a subcontractor coming in and we're on site. You're going to care about that activity, we're going to document any communication and anything we've monitored for. So you'll also see us in your meetings giving progress reports, but we typically will also do a written progress report every two weeks. So obviously, there's some documentation of communication and activity. We also will respond to any public comments that come in or need investigation if there's an issue that comes up. We also document those and how they've been resolved between us and that developer. And then, of course, the main part of this would be to provide construction inspection. I know you have other developers you're working for that may need more of the upfront document review. Mark and I talked about that. Depending on the developer, we would obviously change the scheduled work if you needed that to happen where we put more emphasis on the upfront document review. Whether that takes an engineer, project manager, et cetera, the the way that we. Do our compensation for these. We don't lump some agreements because it can really hurt you and the developer and that. That can make the firm very profitable, we try to make hourly rate for all of our work. And this agreement, I've kept that. So that we can't just endlessly do this project and endlessly. Visit the site and put hour after hour. And based on conversation with Mark and Justin, I did a set. Number of hours, so the maximum that this agreement could go to would be ninety five thousand dollars. And I kind of broke that out. In terms of what we would expect for that. And I think the maximum hourly would be around four hundred and twenty five to four hundred and fifty hours. Breaking most of that down into the inspection side of the work, so if we do a weekly visit. And that's about four to five hours because we're on site for part of that time and it includes travel time. In terms of resources at our company internally. That company would be seeing myself, our project manager, Tim Hollinsworth, you guys have seen Tim in some of your meetings, we've worked, he's worked with your highway department. And then we also have another project manager, Amber. And we also have survey and field inspection guys who do inspection on a regular basis, so. All of those rates are included in appendix C of this agreement. And if you wanted to move forward with other developers, we'd set up a similar hourly sort of agreement. So that you know what we're billing for by the hour. That's sort of the extent of the agreement, do you guys have questions? This being one of your smaller ones, I try to sort of estimate. How many site visits would be needed, how much documentation?
You think you have to do every week or?
No, I think probably two to four a month. Depending on how it starts off, you also have with these projects. You know, the startup when they're immobilizing subcontractors and that sort of thing, you may have more frequent visits. And then you're going to have some winter months where there's not a lot of activity going on, but then in the spring that may. Get started back up again and you'll have more visits again. So I don't want to say, oh, we're going to be there every single week if you have an entire month of no activity in the middle of February. Or January or that sort of thing. But you may have, you know, three times the number of visits once things get going, so you have busier periods of time in there. And the way we write this agreement is we cap it. If we need, if we see a need or things are coming up very frequently or we're having issues, you're going to know well in advance. And we'll have to come back and say, hey, it's looking like this project is far more of a hassle to you, the county, us, the firm. We request to do more hours or make amendment to the contract. Our assumption is we're not going to have to do that, but. We cap it so that you know we're not going to go over. What we've put in the contract without your permission to continue forward.
Just have we narrow the scope down enough so that there's no overlap between the work that we're. Going to get from VS and the work that you're doing and Bob always already doing.
So as of right now, because I want to bring this up. This is out of the counties, this is on the county's dime. So this is not something we've discussed as part of the economic development agreement because. We've not discussed that in a meeting yet, so if that is something, I want to say that preliminarily because if this is something that you guys want. The developer, you know, to pay is part of the scope of. You know, the benefits they're providing us, you know, it's something. I I just want to be open and transparent about that because I don't, I don't want you guys saying, you know, three months from now, shoot, we got this bill, who do we send it to? You know, the solar companies are going, hey, we didn't contract and pay for that, so. Again, that's. But to answer your question, Mark, I I. Can I say that there's no redundancy? No, I can't, I can't say that without, but I mean. I was, and Jenny was pretty good about when I talked to her, I think it's been about a month ago that we talked back in August. That, you know, what we're wanting them to monitor, if you guys wanted them. To monitor was. Post-permit compliance, so, you know, Bob and I, I believe, take you up to scope of. Permit issuance, you know, anything after is just, it's presented to me if there's a problem, of course, but. You know, I think the scope of Bob's work and maybe Bob can correct me if I'm wrong is, once it's permitted, there may be a little bit of monitoring, but not a lot. So can I say that there's no redundancy? I can't say that with certainty, but.
So the next question is. What mechanisms do we have or what whatever steps we need to take to ensure that we can shift the cost. Onto the developers for this?
Well, I believe they're sitting in the front row, so maybe it's 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 worth the discussion with them since they're here. You know, depending on what you guys want to do with the the EDA this morning. You know, you can, if you're wanting to approve it, not approve it, if you're wanting to approve it contingent to, you know, agreement to being reimbursed in X amount of cost for monitoring, you can do all those things. I guess that's part of a dialogue with them perhaps that you guys can.
Well, that's, I mean, really. What we probably need to dive into is. You know, what? Given, given the framework we have now. And what can we force them to do? I mean, we already, we already. You know, we've got the language in there that we, you know, they're going to charge for legal, they're going to pay for the legal and. And engineering services that we contract. Does this fall into that or do we need to add something more to that?
So if you're asking, can we require? If you're asking, is it part of our ordinance now that we mandate that it happen? It's not part of our ordinance that we mandate that it happen, but. Discussions around the economic development agreement, the economic revitalization area are kind of benefits that you add on top of what you're already guaranteeing, that's kind of what the negotiation comes in, you're saying. Because nowhere in our ordinance does it guarantee that we give tax evasion. If it's petitioned, we consider it, but that's why it's that extra piece that you negotiate for.
So what in the ordinance allows us to? Require they pay for the other legal and engineering services?
The economic development agreement.
Okay, so that's, so without the economic.
Reimbursed into the fund.
Okay, so without the economic development agreements.
That the EDA you guys shoulder those.
We still, yeah, we're up, we're on the hook for all that.
Right.
Well.
There's Jared over there.
I don't. I don't think we pulled the trigger on this right now. Stick around and we might by the end of the, depending on how the EDA conversations go.
Sounds good, thanks.
Thank you.
Old squad guard, we're gonna, I think we need to table that, we're gonna get rid of the scrap. We'll scrap them and have them come in and. Give a bid on it. And sell them off that way, but we're gonna. I want to make sure how many we got, we got like seven to eight, thirty four these crap. But we'll pay left till next meeting.
Okay. Improve the minutes.
Through the minutes for September third, two thousand twenty four.
Move to approve those minutes?
I'll second.
September fifth, for the executive session. Salute.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes until September tenth for the executive session. Salute.
I'll second.
Own favorite. Approve the minutes on the executive session on nine thirteen.
Salute. I don't think I was here for that one. Was that?
No. I'll second, own favorite. Motion to approve the payroll claims. For nine. September sixth. For three hundred and thirty five thousand one forty two seventy seven.
Salute.
Second.
Own favorite. Prove the. Claims for seven hundred eighty nine, three fifty ninety.
Salute.
I'll second.
Own favorite.
Did that include the? Part four claim?
You go, that's next. Ratify the claim for.
I'm going to ratify it.
Second.
Own favorite. Pro rule of policy for suspension. Or where is that?
That was something Michael Hedy wanted to do, was it?
Something. I don't remember the details.
Come with the state board of counts, I remember, was it? Yeah, she said. Like other counties have ran into that.
This policy is about.
Basically, it's basically saying that we won't use any contractor that is debarr, suspended ineligible by any state or federal agency to use something like fraud. I think in the, in the statute it talks about violation of of human rights has not been indicted. And it's not terminated, terminated from cause or default by any federal or state agency. Well, I, my understanding is the state board of accounts. Says we need to pass this to say that anybody ineligible to contract with the state or federal government if we're receiving state or federal funds. And I do work for us too for that project. But again, that's only for projects where state or federal funding is involved.
I relax a little.
No, well, I was waiting for Charlie.
Yeah, just. I mean, Michaeline thinks we need it, you know, obviously. Sounded like we do.
Yeah.
He wrote, he wrote that up.
No, that's a, that's a form, that's a form that I think we got from the state board of accounts. It's part of a federal regulation that they passed.
We've seen that, too.
This is how the feds get us to do things we don't like.
Basically, they're saying if you're using our money, you got played by our.
Yeah. And. Given our reliance on CCMG. You probably have to adopt it. So I'll make the motion to. Approve that. Policy versus sanction and disbarment as presented.
I'll second. I made that motion under duress.
And Mark, well then, then will the county have to pay for like background checks and doing all that investigative work to find out?
Probably.
So another. Unfunded mandate sort of thing.
Oh. Well, well. Hopefully, would, you know, if the need arises, we can be smart about it and tie that expense into whatever federal funds that we're receiving.
And they have an application process. It's now background check charge, which is best where we, a lot of places, you know.
Primary revolution for this, that. I'm like.
So there's, there's two items, sorry, enough to drop ahead. Revolutions are in. The Michaeline's defense, there's a lot of stuff, a lot of emails she got, the resolutions are for the council, not for you guys, the economic development agreements. Are for you guys and they will also be for the council tonight, so the EDAs, you're part of that, council's part of that, but the resolutions, that's the council.
And this is for. These, we're starting off with two for Hoosier Solar. Start central and north bend.
Yep. You guys, so you would have got this a couple of weeks ago, whatever heart and office, in case you wanted to while you was going along.
So I'll just start. Good morning, Neil, my name's Nick Barbconnect and I'm vice president of Hoosier Solar and. We're excited to be with you again here today. I'm going to go over a couple of things you all may have heard at the last meeting and just to make sure that everybody in the audience is up to speed, but also cover. The economic development agreements before you here today. I grew up in Michigan City, my family's deep history in Stark County and I'm proud to invest in this community with our team at Hoosier Solar. My grandmother worked at Five Star in Knox in the Courtesy booth, if you had a check cash in the past forty years, she probably cashed it. But we're, we're just excited to be with you, I've spent. My career in federal, state and local government from the White House to La Porte County, working on economic development projects and the hardest part of economic development. Is identifying the resources we can use to build a better place for our community. And when unemployment rates low, the workforce available is low that would support other economic development investments. It's exciting to be able to build a project that will bring at least a million dollars a year in additional local tax revenue. To be invested in county infrastructure as county leaders with. With me and my colleagues today, Larry Wicker, who were senior advisor and longtime Stark County leader, Mary Perrin, community relations specialist, longtime Stark County leader. Marty Lucas, our local council, who has deep experience helping to start counting, navigate tough issues. Andy Metzl, our counsel for TAF, deeply experienced land use attorney, and Aaron Steeley and Chelsea Woodfin. Our developers leading these two projects. Along with several others in the room who are working on this project and then several participating landowners are in the room as well. As a reminder, Hoosier Solar started our conversations with county leaders five years ago with introductions to the county and a goal of six hundred megawatts. Of utility scale solar across Stark County. We're currently going through permitting on four hundred and ten megawatts. Total comprising two hundred and ten megawatts northeast of Knox outside of the. City limits and then another two hundred megawatts east of Best Lake in North Bend Township. Through relationship building diligence over those five years. We've assembled sixteen participating landowners and fifteen participating neighbors to our project. Across some twenty five hundred acres in Stark County. Our project costs over six hundred million dollars to construct. And we've invested over ten million to develop it already across Stark County. When completed, again, it'll generate at least a million dollars a year in county revenue for. Community development or tax reduction, but let's examine those numbers just really quickly topically. We ran an in-plan economic model, it's a common analysis to figure out how much the economic multiplier. Happens for an economic development project in a community. And that in-plan model analysis projects that our Hoosier Solar projects. Will bring over seven hundred and seventy three million in economic impact to the community through our six hundred million of private investment. For perspective on the size of that investment, the GDP, the gross domestic product or. Everything that Stark County has produced in two thousand twenty two was six hundred and forty million dollars. It's a sizable investment. That'll take a lot of local labor to build this project over eighteen months. We're only forecasting ten permanent jobs over the life of the project across both projects, ten total, averaging salaries of seventy five thousand dollars. Although we have additional leases signed, we will only be permitting these four hundred and ten megawatts in Stark County. What we're presenting here today is only about our project and we cannot answer for any questions about any other projects. For which we are not responsible, obviously. I can tell you that we don't plan any additional projects in Stark County and our projects do not include battery storage. Let me, let me repeat myself. Our projects do not include battery storage and you do not need to take my word for it. The regulators, MISO, PJM, that tell you when you can plug into the grid. Make you get what's called a queue position, pick it, you gotta wait in line. We started those queue positions for these two projects five years ago. If you go search on those websites, you will not find battery storage with Hoosier Solar. You, you just won't find it, and if we wanted to add a queue position for MISO PJM battery storage. Or even change one of our existing ones, they would send us to the back of the line and we'd be waiting. These queues are backed up, but at least another five years before we get to this point. Questions on that for?
No, not right now.
And as you know, today's meeting is only for the economic development agreements that very closely mirror all the terms of the EDA provided for Doral's man with agree. For comparison, we'll Doral's building a large project across both Plaski and Stark Counties. We're building the same amount they are in Stark County, Doral built four hundred megawatts and we have four hundred and ten megawatts before you. We've invested, as you know, deeply in community with, from Purdue with our work on the city of Abriel Techs. Co-location of agriculture within and surrounding our solar farms. As you know, we've invested in a swine barn reconstruction, four H fairgrounds. It providing fifty eight thousand dollars for the reconstruction of the swine barn. As you also read about, we've established a permanent Hoosier Solar Community Fund with the Stark County Community Foundation at a hundred and five thousand dollars. That will provide scholarships and donations with the interest earned annually in perpetuity from the fund. At the direction of the community foundation board to serve Stark County's greatest needs. We've attended countless fairs, festivals, parades and community events. And we've now reached out to every neighbor to our project proactively, offering every neighboring residence to our project. A chance to participate in the project and have input and layout through a good neighbor agreement. Fifteen people have signed those agreements and more companies as we go along. In August, we held our widely advertised open house at our downtown Knox office. And held another one a year ago, last July at the Hamlet Fire Station. As you also know, projects before you today are only for the EDA preliminary review. This, these. Documents cannot pass in one meeting and they cannot pass only through the commissioners. We also have to have two meetings of council review. And so we will have two meetings over two months and we're just continuing this discussion to make sure we answer every question with the community. We've been working with the council and the commissioners on these documents for over a month and discussing the abatement with the entire council since February. The documents before you today are not new, they're just merely two documents that connect development agreement. The documents before you today are not new, they're just merely two documents, the economic development agreement between Stark County and the Stark Central Project, which is the entity that covers the project northeast of Knox. And then that can make development agreement up between Stark County and the North Bend Solar Project, which covers the entity for the project east of Best Lake and North Bend Township. The agreements front load fifty thousand dollars per year in good faith payments per project during construction of the project to ensure that the county starts seeing proceeds earlier and will start receiving one hundred thousand dollars a year in twenty-twenty-five once passed. Once our projects begin selling into the grid, we will begin paying economic development agreements of twenty-five hundred dollars per megawatt of nameplate capacity that our facility is rated uh, by independent, uh, inspection regardless of whether it produces that electricity month to month. In addition, there's a five percent escalation for the payments every three years. Again, these commercial terms match the terms that Doral. In your exhibit, you can see that the annual minimum regular payment amounts are spelled out, taken together, our four hundred and ten megawatts across both projects, Stark County is expected to receive a hundred thousand dollars a year until we are selling electricity into the grid. One million, twenty-five thousand dollars beginning in the year we are selling into the grid. Again, that number will grow at five percent every three years for the twenty-year schedule. So that at year twenty, Stark County will receive one nine, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars across both project. At the end, we're all uh, so that payment will be the twentieth year at the end of the twenty-year abatement. Uh, the, the county will start to receive tax payments normally as dictated by the state if you don't enter into a new agreement when you're kind of commissioner twenty years.
Right.
To, uh, to abate taxes, the state will, and, uh, as the state dictates the flow of tax proceeds, you'll collect it normally as you would on any project. As you know, the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance sets the assessed value of solar land in Stark County currently sits at thirteen thousand dollars an acre and that is not abated by these agreements. And will be paid by who your solar, not individual property owners we are leasing from on top of the economic development payments over the life of the project. As you also know, the plan commission drainage boards and existing ordinance of twenty-twenty-two already governed other approvals outside that come up well and bring for you today. But the reason we're doing all this work and the question is whether we, the county wants to take more control, the increased tax revenue through the economic development payments. We won't be increasing use of normal infrastructure like schools through our project. So if the county wants to direct the money to roads, bridges or tax reduction, that's what the economic development agreement enables, local control and and it's normal tax collection wouldn't give the council and the commissioners the power to do that with, on an investment of this size. Uh, but before we get to your questions, I'd like to recognize our senior advisor Larry Whitaker, uh, who's a long time leader in Stark County and knowledgeable about counties economic development. It's a key code.
We're sitting, yeah.
There's another chair around here, Larry.
Yeah, come up here, Larry.
Morning.
Morning.
I just wanted to make a few remarks on, on what the benefit, the financial benefit is to the county from our project and be similar and with the other projects. But there is, as Nick described, there's over twenty million dollars over the life of the project that would come to the county in this economic development payment. And, uh, the reason that's important is if, if these taxes or if this, if, if this project was taxed with no abatement, the county doesn't get any extra money, that the state has a frozen levy and, you know, all the other taxpayers pay a little bit less, which would be a good thing. But for, for an opportunity to raise revenue, the state has allowed these types of economic developments to go into effect. And, uh, Otis Bowen's times when they froze the revenue, I came into the commissioner's office in nineteen eighty-one and it was a brand new frozen levy and that, that was hard because you can't, if you have a big investment, you don't get that additional money into your taxing units. So over the period of, of time, the states allowed for these economic development payments. And when I think about the, the solar projects and the things that can be done, I just want to run through a list of things that are in my mind, just to give you something to think about. But things, things like, um, you can give money to the other taxing units, for instance, the townships help with the fire department equipment or any of the other taxing units if you feel like they should have, they should have some extra money, whether it's schools, libraries, whatever, the county government or whatever. Economic development could get money to have things like a shovel-ready site. When, when companies come and, and look at Stark County to start a project there, build a factory or whatever. It's really important to have a place ready to go, you know, to have the roads, the water, the sewers, the, uh, internet all hooked up for us. And that's the kind of thing you could help fund workforce training would be another thing. Uh, schools under the education enhancements, I think you can do the athletic programs, but anything to do with the education, you, you could, you could divert money there. Recreation across the, the county, uh, taking access to the rivers and the lakes, better access than what we have now. Um, trails and parks. Entertainment, you know, one thing I think of is, uh, it's fairgrounds, you could assist the county, uh, Fair Board to have entertainment throughout the year there at the fairground, have local entertainment here for the citizens of Stark County. The hospital would be another option. I, you know, it's, it's good to have a hospital in the community and I know over the years, there's been discussion whether or not the way ours is set up that it would last. And that would be another place that you could, you could use money to help make sure that we have a hospital here. Another thing, uh, i- is a hotel, there's been an effort to try to attract a hotel, but there hasn't been enough local investment. So those are things that, that I think of and, and there's innumerable other things that other people could, could come up with and, 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 and other ideas. You guys and the council are the ones that'll decide how that money is spent. And I think the more ideas you get better, the better, but my point here today is there are some very good things that you could use that money for that you would never have that opportunity to do if it hadn't been for the solar locating here in the economic. So those are the comments I had. Appreciate your time, pal.
Thank you.
That's all we have for now.
So the only thing for now that, uh, I'll ask about. Um, you do, uh, state pretty explicitly about in section twenty-six, you have the payment of county expenses, you got forty grand allocated to each project.
Yep.
We just heard the price tag on what more we want to do as far as, you know, protecting the county and, and monitoring things as they go along. Are you amenable to uh, at least doubling that amount?
Uh, just a quick question, a clarification on that, uh, project. Uh, is that for only who's your solar monitoring, that ninety-five, or is it all three companies?
That's this solely, yeah, let's go. That was presented was solely for the, uh, Hoosier Solar project.
Okay, well, and, uh, I just want to confirm it starts after Bobolloy is done, who we're already paying for, right? Um, so once the ILP is issued, then it's verification, we're following through on what we set for in our location improvement permit. And is that accurate? That, that VS engineering begins, once Bobolloy is done, Bobolloy says, yep, they've, they satisfied the permit. We get plane commission approval and then at that point we wait to go to construction, we go to construction, that's when VS starts.
Yeah.
Our understanding or it would have been a much higher price. Uh, we have worked on some of these where it's, it starts pre-permitting, but my understanding for this would be post-permitting.
Well, uh, I texted with our CEO, uh, when I was hearing Jenny's presentation. We're prepared to make that commitment, uh, and that would be ninety-fives put across both projects probably, so. Um, uh, four to seven and a half.
You, you, you wrote what you had up. Um, attacking it just as a single developer doing a single project, not that they were two separate projects.
Yeah, I didn't realize there were two separate projects, but the four hundred and ten megawatts tells me quite a bit. Uh, I'd have to absolutely affirm with our CEO that he would advocate with the agreement as it stands. Um, I assumed it is a smaller project, like similar to one we're doing in Jasper. Uh, which is a little bit smaller than this one. Uh, even with your two combined, it's close to what we're doing in Jasper.
Close together, right?
Yeah, yeah, not far, far, you know?
Yeah, if one is in North Bend, you said, which is Bass Lake, where was the other one?
Northeast of Knox.
Okay. Okay, so travel-wise, it's not a huge expense because the people on it are close by, which I did take into account with this. Uh, including myself, we're, you, you will have two people from Culver, one from the Maribor area. Uh, primarily for, uh, anything at Stark. Um, but I cannot, knowing you're going to be going through this economic development process over two months, I can easily come back to you, but I would assume it will be okay as it stands, but I want to make sure that my my leadership at our company.
I want, yeah, I want to get this worked out before the final, you know, look in two mon- two months from now.
Yeah, they, and, and so, um, Justin, can you clarify, we're screwing up here because I'm not an attorney, but my understanding is that, um, the reimbursement and the, the contract with Jenny are separate. And, and as long as we're covering your reimbursement for all of it, then whatever your contracts with Jenny, whether you want to break them up into two or keep them as one is up to you guys.
The building that is sideways.
Yeah, I mean, the funds already set up is used for, um, accounting, engineering and legal.
Yeah, so. And how much of this forty has already been built?
How much is forty or the eighty? Because it's forty per project. Well, that's, that's for, that's for legal fees, that's not for actual engineering, because engineering, you're already paying outside of that.
Well, this seems to be worded that it covers all. Yeah, I know you're only thirty-one more, thirty, you're, you're only mentioned by name in it, but
Yeah.
This, this, the, the whole section heading is payment of county statement.
Third, yes, well, Bob is being paid over and above, I mean, he's not billed up to that, he's being paid outside of that regardless. Through the fund, but thirty-four of eighty. Ask your, to answer your question. Thirty-four of eighty, I believe, thirty-four, eight of eighty. But I would, I would recommend.
Because that's doing a separate section that covers if you either going to cover monitoring, so that way there's no question that.
Okay.
That's, that'd be my recommendation, it'd be cleaner, it'd be safer for you guys.
That sounds good.
I'm more happy to do that.
Whatever, ninety-five across both.
And I'm sure from our standpoint, we can still do one contract with the county. Because we're, if we visit both sites in the same day, we're just gonna build the same, it's an hourly contract, so. It's, and we'd be wise to visit both at the same time to keep it efficient for your sake.
That was the only thing I've got for now.
Yeah.
I'm sure there'll be more still looking.
They have put that in writing.
Yeah, yeah. We'll be back a month from now.
Yeah.
Again.
Well, the economic development agreement, I don't think, Andy, maybe you, because you were on that, you were on that conference call. I don't think the EDA has to be approved twice, it's just the preliminary and then the confirmatory, right? It's not the, so the EDA, I believe is if, if it's your prerogative is approved today, then the council would consider its approval tonight. Then what, what, what takes two approvals is to establish the economic revitalization area.
I think we've established there's, we need to do a little more work done, so I don't think approval today would be in our best interest.
You could, I mean, you could always approve subject to that section. I just.
I'd rather see it writing.
Yeah. It's, it's the government, if it's not in writing, it doesn't exist.
They would.
Yeah, so, uh, so next, uh, October twenty-one, uh, and commissioners meeting, uh, by then will also be, uh, another one after.
October seventh would be the next commissioners meeting.
Yeah, we might as well do this on the day right before. Like, uh, that's the day we have the meeting before the council meeting. Unless you think the, the council would want more time after our approval to review what we approved.
Personally, I'm a little nervous waiting. I mean, I, I just, it sounds like you guys are already in agreement that you want to build forward with this. Yeah. I mean, I, I think Justin's saying that you could approve it with edits. Is that, is that basically what you're saying?
It's enough.
I mean, you could put the forty-seven five now, you could say that we're approving it. And I'm not telling the, the commissioner what to do, so like, this is, so this is a comeback to haunt me. But just from the count, my council hat, it sounds like you're able to add things to it now before you approve it. Um, you know, I, I just, I guess if you don't approve it today, I don't know what the council is going to talk about then if we're going to wait. I mean, we have it on our agenda also. Um, there's been a lot of, uh, advertisement about some things, a lot of discussion in the community. Um, so since, since you allowed me to talk, can I say one other thing? There's been a lot of information flying around on the internet. Okay, so I, I just want to really quickly, for me, at least for my constituency, I'm only one person. But I represent Washington Township, California Township, Oregon, North Bend, the areas that I represent. I promised I wasn't going to raise taxes when I came here. We're the poorest county in the state. This is the only way that's come up for a county like ours that's dead last every year to raise income. There is another way though. Maybe my colleagues are okay with this, I don't know, because I, I, I just started to see some different things, but we could do a wheel tax. We could do additional income taxes. But Larry kind of opened the door for this, thank you for that. We have a frozen levy, it's frozen. I've looked into thawing it. Since I've been on the council, I've been trying to find ways, how do we raise money in Stark County? Tried to put money in the rainy day fund, got in trouble with this, you know, all these different ways and mechanisms that larger counties, they even sneak some money in, but we just, we don't have any money coming in. So I'm just going to say that this is the way to do it, but to answer your question, though, back to that, I just don't know what the council has tonight, then if you guys don't, you know, have some.
What are, what are, what are, by not making this approval tonight? Summarize.
Well, I mean, it just comes up closer to the end of the year and, you know, like, they, it makes it hard for the partners to plan and move forward and we make them wait another month. I'm just saying that that's all it's only up.
And we'd, we'd be happy to make both, not to exceed fifty, to make sure that there's buffer for a few minutes to go back. Uh, and, and make that connection to you.
Yeah, Hoosier's whole legal team here.
Yeah. Out of myself, I'd like to see it on paper before I make my final decision.
Could I say something?
Sure.
There are some landowners here that are promising to make a comment or two prior to you making the final decision.
You guys, you guys, let us see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You won't, let's not dive into that.
Okay.
All right. Um, how many do you think?
I'm okay with it.
We put it in there that.
We, you know, we're, and riding or whatever.
I think you need the preliminary resolution as a recommendation from council or from the commissioners to get approved by the council. And we have to have the ERA established, so there's economic revitalization period.
Okay, okay.
That was, that is something.
Introduction of the ERA for the purpose of recommendation.
That's supposed to, I thought that was.
I misunderstood that, then.
And, and that's a recommendation that it, it, it's not a final decision. It's a step that we need to get to get there, so.
Right.
I, I hope that, I think that's a clarification that could be helped.
Yeah, it may have been a little confusing, I think, in prior petitions with other applicants. Uh, just in a way that it was, it went through the positive making process, but really what should happen is, and it's as a courtesy also to you all, so you've been so involved in this process. If you see fit to make a recommendation to council that they ultimately approve an ERA, which is the economic revitalization area for the properties, so that an abatement then could occur with regard to the ETA, a lot of initials. Does that make sense?
They go hand in hand. If you don't provide the providers, uh, an economic revitalization area, you don't get then they don't get the abatement, you don't get the economic development payments. It's kind of a quid pro quo. Strange there, so, but, and again, you guys would have gotten that a couple of weeks ago, uh, resolution, it's a, it's fairly short. Introduction regardless is this.
So, uh, we're, the motion to move forward on this. Um, and keep the door open to incorporate the extra monitoring that we, that was proposed earlier in the meeting.
You'll meet, meet and offer how maybe that motion is made if that's your prerogative.
That, that would, that would be helpful then to, to have a, a more polished interpretation of
Okay.
how, how to move forward on what I want to implement.
Sure, so firstly, I would say to wrap up in your motion, uh, a recommendation to introduce the economic revitalization area resolution this evening. Um, uh, as well as As well as. If you wanna do that as a standalone motion, so you wanna make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary resolution um. To consider the economic revitalization in the county council, and I I they have a little standalone.
For both projects.
I'm sorry, North Bend and Stark Central. And if you wanna make a separate second motion, in a particular prerogative, the second motion for approval of the economic development agreement. Subject to an additional one hundred thousand dollars. Of reimbursed expenses from Hoosier Solar for project monitoring monitors.
Justin, can I suggest that it's a post permitting monitoring.
Post permitting compliance monitoring.
Compliance monitoring.
That, I mean, that's what the scope of the work is in her contract, her company's contract. Thank you, Marty.
And just to be clear, the the acronym, the abbreviations we're dealing with are E D A and E D E R.
And that's the revitalization area, and you have to have the, you can't just make the whole county, you know, subject to this thing.
And that's before I make a motion, Danny.
Good, this is not final, right? I mean, it's now helping you move forward.
Exactly. Well, then I will make two motions. I will make a motion to recommend to the council approval of the preliminary E D R A.
On favor.
I. Those. And then I'll make the motion to approve. Except.
To approve the economic development agreement subject to.
Make a motion to approve. The E D A subject to uh the uh increases. Uh to the green amount of uh payment for county expenses. To an additional hundred thousand dollars for post permit compliance monitor.
Second. I'll second. On favor.
I. More opposed. The second signature, you didn't mark.
I didn't.
You signed it, but you didn't mark these.
Oh, okay, I thought I wasted it. Get all four, Matt, Justin. Yeah, that's all I seen.
Or I think that it. Making sure. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good morning, uh thanks for having us out here today, always happy to come out to Stark County. Um just like to kinda preface this with, I've been coming out here to Stark County for at least three years now, uh Matt's been with me as well. Um as you know, we're trying to build our last phase of the Dunce project out here um in Stark County. What it is, is I know it was kind of alluded to earlier in another presentation. What we're trying to do is a hundred ninety-nine point five megawatts of injection level of solar paired with battery storage. The ordinance was rewritten in Stark County back in twenty twenty-two, it kept battery storage back in that conversation, it was part of the amended ordinance. Um I was very involved in those conversations back then, been involved with up the cap throughout the county since then. Um I just wanna kinda go through some things on that battery storage topic, cuz obviously we're here for the road use agreement, decommissioning agreement, and economic development. So first and foremost, where we're planning the battery storage. It's at a minimum a quarter mile away, but it's more like a half mile away from any residents. It's at the corner of where that existing substation is off four twenty-one and ten. That's where it's at, it was chosen there as an isolated area. We've already built multiple battery storage projects throughout the state, in the state of Indiana, you actually have to permit battery storage twice through the state. You have to permit it through the Department of Homeland Security. Where they have to make sure everything is accordance with the fire protection, national electric code, all these things to make sure they're safe. And if it's within a half mile of any FEMA flood zone, you actually have to elevate it two feet above the D N R base blood elevation. So, like I said, I know I've taken multiple people out on tours to the battery storage site that we have literally just right across the county line. Um you can look at it and it's, it's very clean.
So for the permitting, as far as the, what do you wanna include in this last phase? How far, how far along are you in the process with that state, with the state on that?
You don't submit for the state until after you have all the local approvals, and you don't submit for the state until you are like right about to start construction on the battery. Yep, so the state looks at your uh like your ninety percent issued construction drawings of the battery storage system. They review those before any actual electrical work or anything goes in, and then after that. You also have to submit a notification, go through a review process before you even start testing or commissioning of the batteries whatsoever.
We're talking about a hundred megawatts?
Yep, so what we're talking about is a hundred, like two hundred megawatts roughly of solar and a hundred megawatts of battery. And the reason that I wanna bring this up is because on our project, what's been played before you on the economic development agreement and all that. It's a, it's about a four hundred and fifty million dollar investment, right? Three hundred and forty million of that is the solar, and if you do that on an acreage basis, it's roughly like nine hundred and something acres. A battery storage investment is a hundred and ten uh million dollars, and you're looking at like five to ten acres. So I like to, I like to use a housing analogy here, right, like what you're getting is, it's no secret the sign, the sun only shines during the daylight, right, like there's no secret about that. You're not actually putting like any additional megawatts on the grid, what you're doing is you're allowing yourself the best utilization of that energy that's there. We have battery storage systems all throughout the country, we have several of them throughout the Indiana, they said we've already built them, we've permitted them, we've gone through this process. Um they're safe, uh we've already done fire training with the fire departments here, um we'll continue to do that on an annual basis, continue to be partners with them. I just wanted to kinda start off with that.
So as far as, cuz that's. The fire service thing is is. Been my primary concern, because I've seen, you know, areas where the, you know, it was. More than a hundred megawatts worth of storage, but it was. And that densed into a relatively small area, you know, and that's, that just means more material to burn when something goes bad. Um and it's, I do believe it's only a matter of when, if, with any. Uh engineering system, engineered system, that, you know, there will be. Some form of failure at some point, it's just how do you mitigate that, so it's not a cascade that affects the entire system. Um so how much? Uh of that hundred megawatts worth of storage, how spread out is that? I mean, we've got this, the. Given what I know about. Batteries of this nature, you know, you you can. You you wind up with a certain number of cells and a certain structure, and and when X number of structures, how spread? Out are those structures on this project?
They're roughly ten to twenty feet apart, and they're done that because that's the, that's the standard for fire protection ag, the electric code. Um but the reason that they're selected where they're at, the reason that these batteries are containerized, is first of all, like I said, these batteries are safe, they're all over the country. This is not anything new, but at the rare event of a failure, that's why they're containerized. Is for that, that, that instance, and um they're also selected on the site to cord on and off, I mean, that's why they're, they're not put in the middle of. Like all this infrastructure, they're put in one side to where if that rare event did happen. What you would do is you would cord on and off, pre- prevent it from, prevent it from spreading, and uh yeah, so, so.
Yeah, my nightmare scenario is still. Uh harkens back to that, the video footage I saw of a fairly substantial fire in Australia a number of years ago. That's. That's my my, what motivates me to be concerned about this.
Okay.
Um and so I just. Would like to hear from you how you, you you know, what.
We monitor.
I think, I think you've you've covered most of it. But yeah, I I I think we need to be very clear on how we. Keep that from happening here.
Yep, so we monitor our systems, like this is nothing new, like Next Era, we've been doing this for years, we're the largest developer. Wind and sun projects, like, we've got so many gigawatts throughout the country, we have a proven track record of success with these projects, right? We monitor all of our assets, both locally and in Juneau Beach. We have literally a, like, an operating system, you can literally walk, look on the screen and see what's going on, we're monitoring at all times, twenty-four seven staffing. So in the event of any like technical anomaly or anything like that, that's something that we see. And it's something that not only would be done locally, but you can, like I said, you can shut it off remotely, you can look at it, it's all there.
So, the first phase. That's being built, that will wind up being in the hands of Nescow. Right. The second phase that is.
I can't, I can't score now at that point yet, I can't speak about that.
So. So, okay. That's, I mean, as far as the monitor, so how much of your monitoring continues on once? Uh Nescow has the first phase and everything.
I I can't talk about that here, so. Um but uh like I said, essentially what I like to compare it to is. By having these battery storage projects, you're actually requiring less renewable projects. You're, you're allowing the optimized of that injection limit, the P O I.
Here's the fun off the wall question. How much uh investment and research is your company doing into sodium ion technology?
I'm not sure, to be honest, I'd have to look into it, but as far as these batteries are concerned, it's the same technology, it's in your cell phones, some cars, it's just lithium ion batteries. So.
I I think on the battery, Chris, we'll have to have a public thing. And like the public, so you can explain all this to them. That's probably the most gold I've had over now that everybody knows it's a battery store, but we don't start counting.
Yeah, I I didn't think it was, like I said, I mean, I think we've been pretty transparent about it.
Right.
So um it's been part of the ordinance since twenty nineteen, it's part of the revised ordinance, um.
Yeah, we knew it was. Part of a aid plan. You know, we didn't get any firm information on what which part of the project or or how. It might have, you know, it could have been a separate project, we, you know, their plans hadn't firmed up, but we got ahead of that. We're trying to, at least with the training for the fire departments, because it was a possibility.
Which they have had some.
Yeah, so I I just wanted to kinda clear the air on that and talk about that a little bit. Um but what we're asking for today is approval of our road use or decommissioning agreement on the projects, um. A decommissioning estimate was already submitted as part of the uh the permitting process. Um and same with the road use agreement, we are currently planning on having all the roads done by the, by spring of next year that were under construction for this project. Um there's minimal overlap between the roads, there is a slight overlap of what's still gonna be under construction, but we're not gonna keep those as gravel, we're gonna go ahead and re. Repave those to what they were, um that will be done just because they're under construction, and we do not plan on grappling the roads, I know that that was an agreement that we made. With the county.
Yeah, that was supposed to work out a whole lot better than it did.
Yes, I understand, so.
What was, what was presented to us was, with this solution would be nice and smooth and solid, almost. Almost near like concrete, and that's not how, I mean, I think it did wind up near almost like concrete, but that was after. Everything had gotten to be a washboard. Um so that's something that. Can't happen.
You know, understood, and and like I said, we don't intend on that happening either, so um. It's understood for the next project, like I said, the road use agreement, the county will be maintaining their roads, you know, there's bond, raise the bond. All those things have been put into the road use agreement, um. So yeah, we're asking for approval about that, the decommissioning agreement.
So, and if I could, if you would just, I could go this question, cuz I wanna make sure we're being consistent for the public's sake. Um you know, good faith, we told the public, you know, that we would mirror what was happening uh with the Hoosier project, with the decommissioning agreement. Remember, there was discussion about, um you know, forced priority on lanes, if this is third party financing, with the road use agreement, that we wanted more control over doing that. Um so it was brought up in the public, and we committed to them, that we'd make sure projects going forward have those conditions, and we've done that here. This is not to say both or don't for, I'm just saying that that's kinda why we arrived at this point, and I had a discussion uh. With uh with Matt about this uh early on uh when when I got this paperwork about a month, month and a half ago. So again, just for the public's sake, we committed to them, that those two standards would be the normal going forward, and we've done that here, the decommissioning agreement. Uh if there's a situation where there's priority leans giving to financing agents on property. That salvage value may or may not be taken into account, depending upon, you know, the amount of priority, they changed that decommissioning agreement. Again, we promised that to the public, same with the road use, that we would have local control, we correct the issues, they compensate us back plus that five percent margin on us. So we committed to the public, we do that, and that's been in these agreements, goes, I, anyway, just. So we know, we hear, we hear what they, what they ask, would be true to incorporate that.
We did change this until or who, like Hoosier.
Yes.
Where we'll have control.
Yeah.
But there was a cap, I think, in there.
Um it was a five million dollar cap on the road use repairs, a five million dollars. Um and maybe you guys can explain, you know, why you wanted to do that cap.
It's just to make sure, like I said, it's just to put a limit there, like that's the bond limit. Um this project that we're proposing is about half the size of the current project that's under construction. So figured five million dollars was her, was a reasonable cap.
This is, I mean, top makes sound, which are you far, five million?
Well, we're not starting.
Well, I know, I'm just saying, any repairs, I mean, they add up quick.
Is there an expert?
You, no. Good question. I mean, that's kind of. My opinion, I don't know, but. Bring them all across the board, the thing. Here we got one that.
What you guys wanna do, you wanna table and look into this stuff or?
No, I think we, I think we have enough information to move forward, I'll make the motion to approve the road use agreement and. Uh decommissioning plan as presented.
Was it inherent this, where are you gonna move forward, or I want a meeting with the public for the battery stuff?
I I can do that as a condition on the E D A, yeah, I can do that as a condition of the economic development agreement. So, I I think that would be fair as part of the economic development agreement, we can do that at, like I said, the planning commission meeting or however. That's fine to do. But these are, this is the right.
We're, maybe, that's not in front of us right now, the only thing in front of us is the road use and the de- decommission. Battery stuff is in front of us. Economic development agreement stuff. Now, if you get the economic development stuff in front of us, and it's not, then then we'll take different action.
You made the most of one.
Yeah.
On favor.
More opposed.
Alright, so just, I just wanna make things clear, so the road use and decommissioning agreement are passed, and then. We do have an economic development agreement in front of the commissioners as well, if you wanna talk about that, we can.
I thought you had pulled that for some reason.
I believe it was pulled off of the council agenda, um. The council agenda um be, because of things like I said, I'm happy to, if you guys want to talk about that. But a public meeting or at the next planning commission meeting or whenever. I'm happy to come in and talk about battery storage. Um as part of that. If, if that's a contingent. We can also just wait until the next meeting for any, anything on the economic development agreement and figure out how.
Head into why we're not looking at the economic development agreement right now. I mean, I thought we were gonna do that, that was on.
It was on the agenda, yes, but due to the concerns about like the battery storage and things like that, I wanted to have some discussions and. Be able to, like I said, if, if we need to.
So then we don't need you on there at the next planning commission.
I have a public hearing on the battery. Well, we'd have to make sure it's with the president of that board.
Just gonna say, so a public, and you got, I mean, you can do another public hearing if you want, I'm trying to limit it, but keep in mind, there still will be a public hearing. For the approval of the economic revitalization area, kind of like how, you know, Hoosier's got to do in October. So I mean, if you want to set another one. More power to you, but there will be.
Okay.
A public hearing board for that as well.
Well, giving them a better chance, oh, we did it ahead of time instead of. You know, I mean, at the meeting, then all of this.
I don't want to recommend strategy to them.
It'll go through. And go through the planning commission. We'll get a look. We'll go through the public hearing process. And then. Um more discussion will be had. Before the final approval by council.
Um, but does that sound right to you, Dave?
Uh well, you know, I'll just throw it out there, you know, I was there for the fire training, I think. If, if we do, if we do change the ordinance, what next area built out there? For those of you that haven't seen it, that's what needs to be in the ordinance. It's, it's out in the middle of nowhere. Chris said, do put above grade, I would say maybe it's four feet above grade. It's, it's very self.
No, we're not, we're not talking about changing an ordinance.
No, no, but I understand that, but I think you're holding off on the E D A, right? Because you want to talk about battery storage. Uh I, that's the only reason why I'm referencing that is that, you know, um aside from. Aside from battery storage part of it, I, you know, I think it's pretty understandable where it's at. It's just you mentioned some things about the planning commission. Leadership from planning commission was also there at the fire training. I don't want to speak for him, I'll let you talk to him yourself, but. Um the firefighters there, I think were very relieved once they saw. I, 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 I understand your concern, you haven't seen it, but they had similar concerns as first responders, but it was. It's nice what they have.
Well, that's my biggest thing, the public's concerned about it. I would just like to make them all aware. I'm getting the chance to be aware. You know, if they show up, they show up. Move forward like that.
Well, I had a, I had a volunteer to fly a drone over it. Um it's just, it was, it would take some time for a next terror to approve that. But I mean, I mean, even if the public saw how it, how it's actually constructed and set up. Think they might feel a little better, because I've had a lot of messages about it because.
Right.
In the past, I volunteered to be your lia- your liaison, not the counseling, but your liaison for solar. So a lot of people have messaged me about specifically about battery storage too, I'm with you, Don.
Yeah.
But they had questions like, well, is the fire department just gonna sit there on the fire if it burns? And we learned in our training that. Actually, Mark, you must have seen some designs because the batteries are in racks, like even though you have the container inside the container, it's modularized. Usually the rack burns if, if it, if it burns, but it stays in the container, you might see some heat. Coming out of vent or something like that, but it's even insulated, so it doesn't, you don't really know it's burning. They know it's burning because they're monitoring it, but we don't really know. They might call us obviously because of the alarm that it says it's on fire, but usually the fire department just wouldn't get involved and. I believe, and, and again, I'll have to let fire leadership, you know, talk about the S O P for this, but we talked about an S O P during the training that. It's just making sure that for whatever reason, it doesn't jump out of the fence and burn something out of the fence. There's gonna be no entry in there unless, you know, unless there's a um somebody gets hurt working on it or something, then obviously then. E M S and fire might have to go in there to extricate somebody. That's a different story, but as far as fire suppression is concerned. For cans off.
He did say it's out, out of town.
It's, so where it's currently planned at is at the, it's, you know, that substation's at in ten and four twenty one. Yeah, it's the south of that, yeah, it's. I measured it on, on yesterday, um as I was flying out here, it's at a minimum of a quarter mile per many residents, but it's more like half a mile. So, which is a significant distance. So I just, it sounds like. The way forward is the public hearing regarding battery storage will be at the E D A hearing for the council. Okay, so just. We'll move forward with the economic development agreement process, then that will be a public hearing and I will be prepared to talk about battery storage with the team and. Before, thank you.
You might hear it on the agenda, sir. Go ahead.
My concern would be the toxic chemicals that are coming out of it.
That's what I say, if you guys go to that next meeting. We're, we're inviting the whole public to be there and Chris can explain all that.
Everybody come charge stuff.
Star County Jail is uh down trouble with the door. And Sally Port, they have been having trouble with them all that. From the beginning. They fixed it, sometimes it's like two thousand dollars to fix it. And then we can buy a whole new unit instead of just six minutes for forty-one feet. Like a motion to go forward with buying a new one.
So you're gonna do this at a.
Yeah, sure. Uh expenditure of. Four thousand one hundred eighty dollars. On Kim Cap for the Sally Fort Door Operator.
I'll second that.
On page.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, wanna come out or you sit there with it?
No, my husband and I are both here.
Okay.
But the roads are a number one big issue on eleven hundred west and five fifty south and five hundred south. The whole time since they tore them roads up, all they were doing was wetting it. That line was blowing everywhere. And when I say everywhere, I mean everywhere, I had allergic reaction to it. I had to go to a doctor, I had to go to a dermatologist, I suffered from a rash on my back for sixteen weeks. From that line and it was painful. And the stuff is still all over. They're like washboards. It's bad on our cars. It's getting all over our grills. And nothing's being done. They just started wetting it with something that's kind of like an oil base. Which sticks to the bottom of our vehicles and we have big clumps now of mud falling. We've had, since they've tore off the roads, a damaged radiator. And I want to know what's being done about this. It's all over my house, my electric bill's going up. I can't even open my windows on beautiful, nice days. Because this stuff is blowing everywhere and it's not just dust, it's like a cloud smoke.
The three hundred and thirty feet from the road. So it's not like we're right up next to the road.
Alright.
My grills are all behind the house underneath the deck. They're covered in limestone dust. You know, I have covers on them. I can show you pictures where they're covered in the dust. My deck is covered. My pond is getting the lime dust in it. When she got the rash, because when you mow up against my pine trees, you can see the dust just flying off of the uh. You know, the branches and all the needles have, you know, lime on them, you know, my well is in the front yard. You know, is that affecting my well supply? I mean, and these guys really, like my wife said. Barely even sprayed water for a year and a half. Um and then we went and ditched and then they sprayed oil, which now is leaving stains in my. The garage floor. You know, uh, we just want to know, I know I hear him say he's gonna uh pay them in twenty twenty-five. Why the hell didn't they do them earlier? I mean, you know, this is costing us money. You know, you guys talk about all the money, you know, it's been cost the county and all that. We're losing money too. Our vehicles are depreciating. I've got three hundred or two hundred and thirty thousand miles on my vehicle. Do I want to go buy a new one and then have open the doors full of lime dust? My rear hatch opens up and the struts that opened up creep every time it opens and closes now, didn't do that. You know, my car's almost ten years old. It's only started doing that the last two years with all lime dust.
In the garbage these workers are throwing out.
We gotta.
Garbage, lunch bag, milk jugs. Dunking domes, we don't even have a dunking domes around here. Why do I have to pick up after the workers in their trash?
And back to me, you know, in the middle. Our clothes, we go out and mow, well, now I throw them in my washing machine. Now lime's getting in my washer too. Then going into my septic, what's it doing to the bacteria in my septic? You know, is it deteriorating that? Am I gonna lose, you know, is it affecting your drink itself? I don't know. Eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred west, it's fifty-two forty south, eleven hundred west.
You know, when these guys leave, we're right around their yard. You know, we're, all of them parked and then at five o'clock when they leave with the cops sitting at the end of the road. We're over there to make sure I don't steal their shit or start shooting my gun. Because they run up and down the road sixty mile an hour with the state cops sitting right there.
And I've got grand neighbors that are fairly new with a brand new beautiful house. That she's got to stay in her house all the time and can't even go out in the yard because she's getting sick from the line. And they keep widening the roads and they're taking more and more of our property. I understand you guys have an easement. But at the same time, once your easement's gone, what are you gonna do? Come take more? And on the sides of the roads that they can't widen it, you gotta be careful because they've laid the stone and they don't pull over for you. And you're trying to pass them and it looks like you have road there or gravel, but you don't. It collapses as soon as you get over that side and then you're sliding into a ditch. I've already had that happen.
I will call out and talk to the guy in charge, see if I can get some things.
Yeah, well, good luck, because I stopped. I mean, I was so furious when I got ran out the road. That I went into the building and raised heck. And, oh yeah, we'll keep the garbage picked up, we'll do this. They, I, they've been caught in my yard. Doing something and I've asked him when I pull out of the driveway, why are you out of your vehicle? Why are you in my yard? What are you doing? Nothing. They've been caught on the back of the property coming through where they've got their uh trailers or whatever. And picking morrels and stuff in the back of my property, because about five acres of my land is all woods. And I purposely keep it like that and I do a trail. And I walked the trail and they've been caught back there. They don't need to be on my property. I have no contract with them. They're trespassing.
In the afternoon, she's talking about in the front yard, there was a sheep head mushroom there about that big. It was gone. I went and looked, I knew, because I mowed that way.
Alright.
So I knew what was there um and that was gone, so. You know, it, it just.
And they're not asking, it's not like they're knocking at the door saying, can, can we walk your property and pick some mushrooms? They're just doing it.
Right now, we're fortunate we don't have them right next to our property, but we have a neighbor um where. They're flicking cigarettes in their yard, you know, uh their garbage, you know, the whole nine yards. Not to mention you have to listen to them. Um all afternoon, you know, while you're out there in your yard, um you know, that.
Yeah, there, my neighbor Carl back here.
And my neighbor back there.
Yeah, um, you know, they. He's gonna be having them put on his rock, which is right next to my driveway. And as it is, my house is cedar, I can't stain with all that stuff lying off the roads.
Right.
And I can't go out, what's the sense of me power washing, so I can stain. I can't even, I put blacktop in my driveway, I can't even do that. I've got rocks. All over the bottom of my driveway and when we drive over, we're tracking it in. Along with all the lime in my garage, it shovels the line up out of my garage. Of what falls off of our car.
You know, and the lime dust itself is pulling the oil out of the asphalt drive. So I gotta seal that again and it just, like I say, I'm referring to the things that cost us money. You know, you guys are talking about your money, well, these are all things too, our air conditioner, you know, the furnace filters uh. These cost us money, you know, nobody really thinks about it until, oh hey, I gotta replace the damn air conditioner filter every month now instead of. Every two and they're bad.
Or the lime dust is in our A C or in our furnace. We just spent ten thousand dollars before you guys chewed up. Chewed up the road, we put in a new A C unit and furnace. I don't want that ruined, so I gotta spend another ten thousand dollars.
Well, some uh condenser outside now because they're back full line, lose efficiency um. Like I say, they should have done the roads ahead of time and.
And we should have been notified. We weren't even notified. I had no clue, I mean, I worked at. Family Express and seen the solar panels going in over in Jasper, they had tear up their roads. But they tore up our roads. I had no idea that they were gonna do this. I knew solar panels were going in because of my neighbor. But I thought they were gonna be like the ones on ten and in Jasper. I had no idea they were gonna make such a big mess. I got nothing in the mail. I was not notified of any of this.
We haven't even touched on this fact either that I ride a motorcycle. I haven't rode it, ridden it for two years.
Cause it's dangerous.
Yeah, and I don't want to tear my stuff up. I didn't spend that kind of money. First things to ride it on gravel road, you know, I didn't buy that model.
I'm gonna say the construction about gone, hopefully we'll, we'll call a guy about the dust. See if I can get him to spray something on there. Get that road took care of.
Appreciate you listening.
Yes, no problem.
Even more on the dust of, and the gravel, I would keep liberty with a complete smashed out. Under gravel, getting the truck from the contractors. Driving fifty-six thousand dollars. Throwing rocks, throwing dust.
And I. I can.
Wash my house inside and out. Like that. My carpet, my walls. Field was soaked, my burning roof. Thirteen thousand dollar roof. A blacktop driveway, need silicone, I'm gonna silicone the dust every day. If everyone knows if you ever blacked out. It's a nasty day that I have to do. To do that. I cannot do that with thousands of vehicles up and down my road. From sun up to sundown.
Have they not slowed down, sir?
No, they put a speed limit sign right on front of the house. They get in their personal vehicles.
This way I got from. Now with more. Around them is recent, but y'all. Well, we've seen it. We still can't address.
Another thing I want to bring up, the highway department will not make no more pugs. When this pile of pugs is gone. We're done making pugger highway. We usually do eight to ten mile a year. Now we got enough money to do four or five mile. Unless the council wants to up the budget on that aggregate area. Uh.
Don. Just for clarity though, that's because you're gonna make it with hot mix and so it's twice as expensive.
Yep, yep, twice as expensive, we gotta buy and have hauled in. We won't store none out there, we'll store a little bit of puff. Old mix for patch. But we'll, they'll not store no more, make no more out. Seven hundred each. I wanted to ask you guys.
Jim thing, he's not here, so. I, I'll follow up on that, see what he's talking about.
Yeah, that's him, man, so I'm saying seven hundred each. I would like to put a sign up, said local traffic, on lap, local trucks on. And you can call them and ask them, you'll run there if you want, it'll be deal with not loving.
That's. I'm thinking seven hundred east closer to five hundred north. I didn't realize it was all the way down that way, okay.
Seven hundred east and eight. I'd actually like space them out to go.
This is.
I want to stop her.
No, but we, we have, we've had this problem. Okay.
It's a timber bridge too, it's our left timber bridge, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. Ask you guys permission what you thought on.
Yeah, let's. Take the steps we need to to enforce the, the weight limits on that road. Cause it's not one of our. As far as I can recall, it's not one of our designated truck routes. Cause that's not one of our, as far as I can recall, that's not one of our designated truck routes.
No, it's not.
So. Those trucks should be running on, on the roads that were built to be, to handle their traffic.
I don't think them trucks necessarily weigh a lot. It's just, it looks like it, but. Lot of traffic though.
Yeah, that's the main thing. Now, like I say, we've even asked, you know, you think that at least be considered to load it, run the highway.
Donny, they also way abuse the speed limit on that. I live right there.
That's what I'm saying, just.
They fly so hard. I'm constantly running over potatoes and and. They, they move fast up and down seven hundred.
And I live on twenty five north. I have to agree with people that are bringing it up. I saw, they weren't flying though. But I saw a lot of potato trucks yesterday. If six hundred east went all the way through to eight, the farmers have been very supportive. I, I had like two thousand signatures, but. Through the co-op, but if, if six hundred east went all the way through, then they could go to eight and take eight. Connect with Hamlet Road, just going that out there.
You know, and you guys have cops right at the end of the road. Sometimes they sit, they watch them. Pass and the speed limit sign that they put up tells me how fast they're going.
That, the cops out there are not the county. Sorry, it's the state police. Sorry. Sheriff, what's that right here? But it's uh.
Yeah.
It's state.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Step up the enforcement on that road.
I don't think we need a motion on that.
Jim here. Sam, will you see if he's in and follow us?
Another thing I want on record. Sir, is uh Mark will be over the county garage as of today on. Till the first year till we make other decision and I will be over to jail and the EMS department.
We probably need a formal motion and vote on that. That's part of the organization.
Yep.
We did beginning of the year.
Yep. I'll make that motion. Second. I'll second. Home favorite, say. You're doing.
Oh, Andy, you're taking the EMS too?
You up?
Oh, yeah. I'm waiting on Nancy.
Oh, good.
There she goes. For now. Miss another hour.
This is last month's from after that. We do have two um watching checks.
O'Hare. Eight hundred seventy three ninety four.
This is which is a medical.
Emergency, emergency and medical. Four hundred thirty one nineteen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jim.
Hi, guys. How are you and ladies? Uh, operations as of September for August. We're still operating four out of six endosus. Uh, our staffing has increased to two or more to ninety one percent across the board. Uh, we're working on three or more paramedics at any given time throughout town. Transfers. Uh, forty three as of last month, which increased to seven. Uh, we've actually done more starting this. For like next month's. Uh, we picked up two new accounts. Uh, we got a new part-time transfer group being trained at this time. Uh, we're getting called for transfers. More from the hospitals and more from everywhere. Outside of even Porter is calling us for transfers because he can't find anybody to do it with.
And we're not. And those, the transferred requests we're getting and we're, we're acknowledging are not having any effect on. Our ability to respond to anything else?
Nope, not at all. We still have. The only thing that the nine one one transfers take are emergencies that are starting, which is have to go to the cath lab right there. No events or bullets and you have to go from there. Right now, we have two openings for E M Ts with three applications waiting. Uh, we have three new applications that were received to still have to go through the trial process. Uh, six out of eight current full-time paramedics, two unfulfilled openings. Nineteen part-time paramedics and four awaiting applications. And I was just informed yesterday that we have a couple of members that wanna come back. To complete the circuit. Uh, come just do the full circle back to us because they like the atmosphere. Much better. Uh, and he wants to bring some other people with him. I have no openings right this second, other than that many people. We did complete the training for the ALS assist. Today we have CPR. Recertification going on at Knox Base. Upcoming, we have something that's possibly wanna put into effect. As part of the new training curriculum and as pre-hospital trauma and life support. It's something that's half of the paramedics already have because they have it for their certification. Uh, emergency vehicle operations again for new people are being scheduled for. Says August going here, but it's gonna go for November. Last reported injury was still three five, thank goodness. Ambulance maintenance thirty three oh eight, forty seven twenty five, forty seven twenty six. They're all current, five fourteen's current. Medic five's current eighty four. Chase car is current. Uh, my car is current. Eighty five. We'll discuss that one shortly. Grants just reopened now. Uh, actually I have two grants sitting out there. One of them. Is for assistance in getting some new equipment, like complete winter. That's durable. Yeah, I like the buyer department turnout here, but that's what I'm working on currently. And switching everything over from one medical director. We did get a new medical director. Uh, new medical director is very, very progressive. He wants to see us move into the. Modern millennium. Decades and he wants to reevaluate our service every year, not every ten years like the last one. So put us into the cutting edge where I'd like to be. We got no donations for that long for this month. And P P is still good for everything else. Now, zero zero eighty five, which is a reserve units. This is becoming an issue. Right now it's becoming unreliable for service. Uh, it has had twenty thousand one hundred dollars done. Put into it in the last six to nine months. And it's possibly gonna need another transmission.
It's been replaced once, hasn't it?
Mm-hmm, these remans only, they don't give you any warranty on these remans anymore. Chevrolet does not make a new one for it. I confirmed that this morning, we're not Chevrolet. It also has two hundred and nine thousand miles on it. This is the same one that sat. For a transmission once, for a rear once. Let's say one that we had put another second rear in it. It's also the same one who has a body control module issue, air conditioning issues. It's one of the G M diesels. The other G M diesel, beautiful. Nothing wrong with that one. Uh, I have quotes for new ambulances. Which with the new. Last time we got a new ambulance was the one I got wrecked. Yeah, we bought a remount for that. We have had nothing but issues out of the remount itself. They, they've been great with working on us. But it'll go out of service for three or four days at a time. Uh, it had a wiring issue where it caught the bottom of the wiring on. Not on fire, but it arced out and burned out the alternator right in the middle of the E R parking lot. It took out the backup camera. When these remount companies take this twenty year old box and put it on a brand new chassis. What they're doing is rehabbing the outside of the box, giving it a basic lipstick job, just cleaning everything up. And putting it back together. We paid a hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars for that remount. It's out of warranty for the box. Ford still has their warranty, but because the way the, the remount was put into the box. And they spliced the wires together, that kind of eliminated a lot of the warranty that Ford had. The three quote, I have four quotes actually.
On the remount, what's the truck? What's the mine?
Oh, the miles on the one truck is has eighteen thousand miles on it. That's not the one. That one's actually, all the bugs have been worked out of that.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, all the bugs have been worked out of it. The last remount we had got was the one in North Judson. And it came from Crossroads, ambulance in Middlebury. I talked to former director Travis Clary and he told me, he said he, they had the exact same water leak issues coming through the lights. Because they took the warped metal and put it back together.
Has that truck got very many miles on?
That one's got a hundred and twenty nine thousand. So I mean, most of them have over a hundred and twenty thousand miles on them now, except for the, the ones worked out of.
With the one with only eighteen, we're keeping.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're definitely keeping. The one to get rid of is the one with the most miles and it's been in and out of service. Left and right and honestly, yeah, that's zero to eighty five. I don't feel comfortable putting. My family in it, but my family won't go in. I don't want anybody else's.
What's, what's your suggestion?
To replace it with a new one, which. Wouldn't be available. The first newest one would be January of twenty five. And that's two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. And it comes with the full factory warranty, uh, structural support for twenty years.
You say you did have three quotes?
Yeah, the second one was two twenty four and it was from, wouldn't be available till six twenty five.
What's the details on that?
Uh, that is an Osage. That's a twenty twenty five Osage G four fifty. Uh, all white. That's June of twenty twenty five. It'll be ready. And then we have the third one, which is two hundred and thirty five thousand. It is due off the line February of twenty twenty six. Then we also have one from DeMeere. Which is September of twenty five scheduled to be completed for two hundred and thirty six thousand. DeMeere is a bit overpriced for the quality. Osage has a decade, decades long reputation. Dave Cole was a great representative. Uh, he has taken care of us. With the last one that wrecked. I would like permission forward this over to the council.
When you say forward to the council, to be paid out of what? I mean, they've got some funds that they can. They can look at.
Either way, whichever way we have to go. Last.
Even no matter what fund we do, you still gonna have to.
Well, I mean.
This one require an additional.
I mean, you know, the other thing too, is you've found some pretty nice used stuff lately and there's been some stuff floating around and we're not gonna consider. I mean, I just, I know what the council might ask, so.
The used stuff right now, the, the last one we had from La Porte, we got as an emergency purchase. Uh, which came out of the budget. It's rusted out. It's still a ten year old ambulance.
But I thought it was a, like, you got it. I thought you guys were pretty happy with it.
It was because of the price.
Yeah, I was happy with the twenty one.
I'm also thinking about prices, the only reason why I'm asking, so.
I'm thinking about reliability in long term.
But hasn't it been reliable though? I mean, like.
It's been reliable.
Okay, I just, cause I mean, the public's listening too, so I just wanna make sure that we're not like making them think that we bought something that.
It was not configured for patient uh in mind. It's got a side mount. It was a temporary purchase, which we turned into a transfer truck. Uh, transfer trucks is what's gonna be paying bacon money.
How about if you look in and wait till the next meeting, council, mention a meeting, maybe the twenty first, I think they'd say. Come back to us and see if you can find any used.
I will, I will do that.
Let us decide if we're gonna go with the new or we're gonna bring the money ours.
Sounds good to me. Uh, two other things. Uh, vacation request for me, ten nine through ten sixteen, my last vacation got canceled. Uh. Because of weather.
Absolutely.
Yes, and uh, November nineteenth through the twenty second Indiana EMS Education Conference. Which two of us are going down for some instructors for the hand heavy system. And the M I H program and mobile integrated health program. I just wanna make sure that was okay.
You got someone in place.
I've got, yeah, I've got someone in place that'll, that'll cover that. Plus I work. I'm available twenty four hours a day by phone, no matter what, where I am. I took one while I was in Tennessee. Uh, other than that. Everything's good.
Could I ask one question I just thought of too? Do any of these manufacturers, Jim? Uh, cause I think Hamlet has done these deals with cop cars before where they have like zero percent financing. Did they ever mention, did they ever mention that? That might be worth looking into also because then we're paying, you know, like we're on their money basically, like.
I do know we could trade the ambulance and also.
Well, sometimes we get more out of it though in our offices or, or we use it for the. Sign people on the highway or whatever, but I just thought about though, because I was talking to the town manager. And Hamlet, he asked before, like, did we ever look into financing? And I thought he said it was zero percent or almost like in that neighborhood of where. It was about like zero percent financing.
That'd be another thing I'll check into before I come back.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public? Both of them, John, some of them.